Members of the board, Superintendent Gross. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is John Arson and I am here on behalf of the Rife Arts Council and some of our members are here with me to discuss an exciting opportunity, an event we hope will serve as a celebration of the arts, a chance to bring our community together and a fundraiser to benefit both the Rife and Grand Rapids area schools students. This spring, the Rife Arts Council's External Affairs Committee has set a goal to host a fundraising gala on May thirty first, twenty twenty five using the Rife lobby as the venue. This gala would be a formal, high-profile event aimed at generating critical funding to support the arts and education in our district. We envision a gathering of community members, business leaders, and patrons of the arts coming together to celebrate the shared successes of the Rife and the district while raising funds that directly benefit our students. One key element to ensuring the event's success is the ability to serve alcohol as part of the experience. The reality is that offering alcohol at events of this type significantly increases attendance, enhances the guest's experience, and most importantly, drives revenue. Fundraising experts, as well as our own experience from past events, confirm that alcohol sales have a substantial impact on overall fundraising outcomes. This is where we face the challenge. Grand Rapids area schools' current policy prohibits alcohol on school property, meaning that our gala cannot include alcohol unless an exception is made. While we completely respect the district's policy, tonight, we are asking you to consider amending it to allow for narrowly defined exceptions such as this event. Let me outline the reasoning behind our request, address concerns that may arise, and explain how this could be a mutually beneficial opportunity for both the Rife and Grand Rapids area schools. Let's address the elephant in the room right away. Why not just host the gala without alcohol or offer mocktails or something like that instead? The answer is simple but important. Fundraising galas that include alcohol consistently generate more revenue. This isn't just about offering beverages, it's about creating an atmosphere that encourages community members to engage, stay longer, and contribute more generously. When guests enjoy themselves, they're more likely to participate in fundraising activities such as games, auctions, raffles, or pledges. Alcohol also helps attract a broader audience, including business leaders and major donors who expect a polished, professional event. To put it plainly, we are asking for this amendment because we need this fundraiser to be as successful as possible. And the more successful we are, the more resources we can pour back into the Rife, into our arts programs, and into Grand Rapids area schools. This is not just a benefit for us. It's a meaningful opportunity for the district, its students, and the community as a whole. Our fundraising gala isn't just about raising money for the Rife Arts Council. We are committed to making this a partnership that benefits the district in very tangible ways. Specifically, we are proposing that ten percent of the proceeds from the event be donated directly to Grand Rapids area schools Thunderhawk Fund. This fund provides financial assistance to all student programs and clubs, from band and choir to sports teams and theater productions. These dollars would directly enhance opportunities for students across the district, whether it's purchasing new equipment, funding field trips, or supporting underfunded programs. By working together on this policy amendment, we can unlock new opportunities for students and create a lasting impact on the community. Let me begin by addressing what I believe are the key concerns that may be on your minds. These are valid concerns, and I hope to provide clarity and reassurance on each one. The first concern is protecting students from harm or mixed messages. A major concern with any event involving alcohol on school property is the message it might send to students. The last thing we want to do is undermine the values or standards the district works so hard to uphold. Our solution is timing and location. The proposed event would take place outside the school year. No students would attend this event. The event would also be carefully separated from the core purpose of the property as an educational institution. Additionally, we envision this as a professional fundraising event targeted at adults, parents, local business leaders, and community supporters of the arts. The event would focus on celebrating the Rife's mission, its impact on the community, and the vital role of arts education in our schools. By carefully framing this event, we believe we can avoid any perception of mixed messaging. Instead, we can demonstrate a model of responsible, community-driven collaboration that benefits students and the arts alike. Next, let's consider liability and risk. The district's responsibility to protect its resources and reputation is another critical concern. Understandably, the idea of serving alcohol on school property raises questions about liability, compliance with state law, and how risks would be mitigated. First and foremost, let me assure you that the Rife Arts Council takes this issue extremely seriously. We would meet or exceed all legal and licensing requirements. This includes securing a temporary liquor license through the city of Grand Rapids, hiring licensed and insured professional bartenders to serve alcohol, and purchasing additional liability insurance to cover the event and protect both the Rife and the district. Beyond this, we are fully committed to working with district leadership to develop a detailed risk management plan. This could include measures such as limiting alcohol consumption, clearly designated in restricted areas, and creating an oversight process to ensure compliance. The third concern I will address is precedent for other groups. Another possible concern is that approving this amendment could set a precedent, leading to an influx of similar requests from other organizations or groups. How would the board ensure that this policy remains fair and consistent while upholding the district's values? This is where the language of the policy becomes crucial. We are asking for a narrowly defined amendment that would allow exceptions under specific conditions. For example, the policy could limit such events to nonprofit organizations with a direct connection to the district's mission and require board approval for each exception. By clearly defining the scope of the policy, you retain control over how and when exceptions are granted, preventing any potential misuse. Finally, let's consider public perception. The community's perception of this amendment is another critical factor. Some might question whether allowing alcohol on school property aligns with the district's role as a trusted educational institution. However, we believe that with the right communication and transparency, this policy amendment can be positioned as a positive step for the community. The Rife Arts Council has a long history of working in partnership with Grand Rapids area schools to enhance arts education and provide enriching opportunities for students. By hosting this event at the Rife, we are showcasing the district's support for the arts while raising funds that directly benefit students. In fact, we've already spoken with key stakeholders, including band, choir, and theater directors, as well as the Activities Director at Grand Rapids High School. They have expressed their support for this proposal, especially in light of our commitment to contributing a portion of the proceeds to the Thunderhawk Fund. In closing, I want to emphasize that this isn't just about one event or one policy amendment. This is about creating a framework for collaboration that allows the Rife Arts Council and Grand Rapids area schools to work together more effectively in the future. We are not just asking for permission to serve alcohol at any event. We are asking for a partnership, one that strengthens the Rife as a vibrant community resource, supports the arts, and provides direct benefits to Grand Rapids area schools students. I understand that this is a significant decision, and I appreciate the careful thought and consideration you are giving to it. I, along with the Rife Arts Council, am here to answer any questions you may have and work with you to address any concerns. Thank you again for your time, your support, and your dedication to the students and families of Grand Rapids area schools.
Thank you. You know, as you know, this workshop, there's no votes taken. And this was really put on the agenda as an information-only piece for us.
Okay.
So I guess at this point, unless somebody has a specific question, we'll take the information you gave us and consider that. But it would be a significant lift for us to put an amendment in place, you know, do a policy, bring it to a board meeting before that date, but I guess we'll consider that.
Okay.
Point of clarification. You've obviously given extensive consideration to this fundraiser. What kind of, and you earmarked ten percent of the funds for the Thunderhawk Fund. What kind of funds are we talking about?
We're hoping in our first year to raise somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars through the gala. And the ten percent is a starting point that can be negotiable for, you know, if we get to the point where we have a policy change in place that we can consider it.
Thank you.
Yep.
So with this, you're hoping that this would be something that you would put on every year? This would be an annual event?
Ideally, we would like to do that. First, of course, we have to get through the hoops so that we can have it once. And then if everything goes well, that would be what we would hope for.
Any other comments or questions? Thanks for coming today.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Stayed him on the agenda, Melanie. Community Ed, extend your programming indicator.
Thank you for having me, guys. I'm going to sit here and chat Julie's gonna come. I always get excited. Once a year, I get to come visit you guys and share all the stuff that's going on in Community Ed. So I hope it's not too long that I wanted to share some of the cool things that are happening with Community Ed here. So first off, I wanted to start with, I put together, it's an org chart, but it's like our Community Ed umbrella. There's some new board members on here, so I wanted to kind of go into a little detail with some of the programs and services that we provide in Community Ed. And I also, as we work on the strategic direction for the district, how Community Ed molds into our strategic direction and really is a piece of what we do with our community that revolves around our strategic direction as a district. So as you see up in the top corner, the colors of our strategic direction are up there for the district. And I kind of highlighted on the Community Ed org chart how those colors match. So as we looked down the first column of our districts that we partner with through community education, we have the four districts. It shows five because I put Big Fork because we have a program up in Big Fork for Community Ed specifically. And that really is about partnerships and resources. Because of our partnerships, we are able to save on resources as a district. Community Ed has a leadership contract with each district, and which brings in revenue to provide the services that we're providing across Atasca area. So I'll go into each of these areas a little bit, where we're going to start with the districts. And what we do across all four districts is we provide three catalogs that go across all four districts, all of Atasca County, three times a year. We reach twenty-three thousand residents each catalog that goes out, and that is all of our Atasca County residents. We provide over twenty thousand five hundred individual opportunities this past year, so this is twenty-three, twenty-four data. We offered six hundred and thirty-six educational classes, which was around thirteen classes per week in our community across the county. Community Ed really strives to connect, create, and explore. So through those opportunities, connecting people together and connecting people to our schools, creating opportunities where they learn, explore, engage, and then exploring those curiosities of our community and really trying to meet the needs of all individuals within our community. And this is Grand Rapids-specific data. We offered a hundred and ninety-five adult opportunities, which participation was four thousand five hundred forty-two participants. And then a hundred and ninety-seven youth opportunities, ten thousand two hundred participants in the youth world. So looking at, I broke it down by age too, so you can see our largest users are K through five participants. They are looking for stuff to do after school hours in the summers. And then our adults is about thirty-one percent of our total participants are adults in the community, nineteen-plus participating in the program.
Melanie, as you're out talking to other Community Ed directors, do you have any like feeling what their graphs would look like? Is this pretty typical or don't you know? That's okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know Proctor Hermantown is one I work closely with, and theirs is completely different. It's almost all youth, and their adults are not engaging. And she thinks it's because there's other opportunities to do there. When Grand Rapids, we are kind of providing some of the hub in our community. And I would have to say, as we move forward over the referendum, those four thousand five hundred forty-two participants have been in our buildings, have had, most of them positive experiences because most of our data is positive. And so I think we have a mailing list, and we have opportunities to connect with those people in our community. And some of those are duplicated participants, so if some person takes a class ten times, they're counted ten times. But we have those people too.
So basically, an opportunity is an enrolled participant?
Yes. Yep, so we use duplicated numbers. So then our next column here is our services. Communications, Community Ed has a communications specialist that works on communications with our community, whether it be district communications or Community Ed communications. She is our person helping us communicate to our community what's going on with our buildings and schools and Community Ed courses and offerings. And then the facility usage, that falls under our Community Ed umbrella too as a steward of resources, getting people into our buildings and using our research that we have here in our after-school hours programming, early childhood screening, and then also scholarships. I'm going to go into depth on a few of these programs also. So scholarships, we offer through the Community Foundation. We get some money to offer scholarships to anyone who can afford Community Ed opportunity, which has been a real nice success across Atasca County, people can apply and rented funds based on the needs. So as we jump into facility usage for the district, last year, we had two hundred and seventeen different groups within our facilities after hours. And four, forty-nine thousand hours were used. So you say there's not that many hours in a year, but that's counting like Gym One, Gym Two, Gym Three. They're all booked every night after school. And so that's how many hours people have been in our facilities this past year. So in fiscal year twenty-four, as you know, we started invoicing groups to come into our spaces and use our spaces after hours. We invoiced forty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars for the district's general fund. And that usage is not going down. I don't know how much we can go up because we are using our spaces as much as possible. So that's something that's probably a pretty consistent year after year.
Melanie, do we have a sense that the amount that we invoice, does that cover the expenses, the out-of-pocket expenses for that after school use?
I'm not sure exactly. I don't know that we put that together yet, but that might be something I can talk to Karen about to see. You know, the custodian in the building, the lights, the toilet paper, the, all of those extra things that are happening. So.
The one addition, you know, when we have groups in the building practicing, we don't have staff, extra staff. You know, we already have staff, then we'll bring in extra if somebody's just practicing. There would be some things like, yeah, like paper towels and stuff to some degree. But if we do have a custodian, when somebody runs on the weekend, we do require a custodial, and the group pays for that. So we don't incur any labor costs that we wouldn't normally incur.
And then our early childhood screenings. So the early childhood screenings are a requirement before they enter kindergarten. And through Community Ed, we have, this past year had three hundred and twenty screenings, which is our three-to-five-year-olds entering kindergarten. We use a Dial-For-Assessment tool, so evidence-based tool that is required by the state of Minnesota. And we are identifying early interventions for students. So there's a, our early childhood school nurse is present with screenings, and then we train the screeners. We usually screen one time a month, and we have about twenty-five kids coming in each month, screening, and then able to identify needs, whether it be speech or early interventions or special ed services. Those are identified early before the students are coming into school.
Melanie?
Yeah, do we partner with IAS on that early childhood screening at all?
Yes, so all of our screeners that are trained are training, or we train them and they go to all sites. So that was a partnership that started two years ago. Yeah.
A lot of those in this building, right? We're doing that screening here now, where we must really been able to do that before.
Yes, we've, we did bring it here over on the Community Ed wing. And before, we used to be in and out of different buildings wherever there was space. And it just didn't, it was, where would we get fit? So now it's a.
This is where.
There's one, there's one location for families to remember.
And then down our third column is the programs that we offer. We are offering adult opportunities, youth opportunities, Learning Academy, and family engagement. I just wanted to share some of the adult opportunities that have been going on in this building alone. So this building has been a real blessing for Community Ed. We have an actual space that we can use during the daytime, which makes programming for adults that are retired adults but still very active in our community much more easy because they, some of them don't want to be out at nighttime. So we're providing them a space to come to a class during the day. We've offered some basket weaving, we've offered, this is like a scarf weaving on the weaving tray or whatever you call that. I obviously didn't take the class because I don't.
Loom?
There you go. You guys got that. I should take the class now. The pickleball in the gym with the new floor surface that we were able to purchase this year through grant funding, our Esser Funds, has been great. We have that full, well, Dave, do you want to come in? That pickleball floor, it's not just pickleball floor, but has been full with pickleballers from nine AM till nine PM, Monday through Friday. So we have groups coming in. They do pay a fee to come participate in pickleball. Then we also have staff at our lunchtime have been going down and taking like a fifteen-minute lunch and blowing off some steam. We then in the evenings have our tech hub kids going into the gymnasium and using it. So it's been amazing seeing that space being used again. We also, the kitchen that is right here has been used for cooking classes and has been a great success. And still, we're still learning how to use everything properly and.
Let me ask this question. Is that facility the pickleball available before they painted on our tennis courts or?
But that net that's in there was the one they left on our.
So we got something out of it.
Not quite even.
But something. And then the learning and exploration, you know, the Ukrainian Easter egg painting is happening down in our classes as well. But a lot of opportunities for adults, whether it be in this building, we do partner with other organizations like McCrosskey, the YMCA, outside of the buildings that we have classes in. And then we offer, we have a classroom at the middle school too that we use for a lot of our art classes and exploration classes.
Just want, you know, Melanie called this out, but if you go around that, that, those pictures, we did not have a place to do those things before we repurposed this building. So when we're talking about, you know, why did we end up with the buildings we have? And why did we decide to keep what we kept and why the admin building? Like, this was a huge opportunity for our school district and the, you know, the people in it from, you know, really youth to however old, however old. So it's really neat.
And it is being used all day long. And then to our youth programs, we offer a lot of after-school opportunities for youth. The one I'm going to highlight tonight is our Learning Academy program. This is our academic-based programming that we hire licensed teachers to teach kids after school two nights a week for an hour and a half intervention. And then also, in the summer, we run a four-week-long program. So this is summer data from this past summer. The outcomes, well, the goals of the program are to provide academic and enrichment opportunities for students, along with some social and emotional supports that students need in the summer months and food. So we provide breakfast and lunch and snack for kids. So last year, we served three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two meals for students in the summer program. We had two hundred and ninety-seven students enrolled in the program grades going into first grade, so our kindergarteners went into eighth grade. They received a hundred and five hours of academic support. These are students who are right at the bubble or below grade level in an academic area, reading math, or have other risk factors of being homeless or being home without meals. So it's not just academics, but our big focus in the summer program is academics. It was reported that in all grades, students were better prepared for the next year than their peers who choose not to attend Summer Learning Academy. This is a referral-based program, so we're able to look at students who were referred and did not attend compared to students who were referred and attended. And so students who were referred and attended had less of a summer slide than those who were referred and did not attend the program. So we're looking at summer slide because the goal of this really is, you know, in four weeks, we're not going to get leaps and bounds with their academic scores, but we can avoid some of that summer slide or, and keep them interested in reading, interested in math, and like just a love of learning that might be different than they're doing in the classroom. But we really focus on hands-on exploration. It's small group sizes, so using Esser Funds, we're able to get group sizes down to eight or ten. This year, we'll probably have to go back up to twelve to fifteen because of the targeted services funds that we use for the program. But all explorations, small learning groups, interventions based on the students' needs, really working on an individual student's needs within the summer program. Ninety-four percent of the students self-reported that they thought they would do better in school next year. Ninety-seven percent of the students reported that the people in Summer Learning Academy understood and accepted them for who they were. And this is all self-reported by the students who were in the program. Twenty-five percent of the participants were on an IEP, and we work with Special Act closely to provide services for students who may need additional supports. Some students one-to-one, many of them are self-sufficient and able to be successful in a classroom. However, they might need additional supports at times during the program. Seventy percent of the participating students qualified for free or reduced meals, and that's where we are able to serve them free breakfast and free lunch, and then also a snack. Some comments from a parent, you know, it was a fantastic program and it made a big impact on my child's confidence going into first grade. You know, you think about those kinders, keeping them engaged in the summer. A little student's comment was, I made new friends at Headbutt Learning Academy. If you guys look at the little flyer I sent, there was a kid who, we use the All Kids Bike Program, and we had a kindergarten first grade student on a trider bike. So all kids got to be on the trider bikes, and a kid said, I was really scared the first time, but then I'm not anymore. You know, so just thinking of those kids trying new things in the summer months, never been on a bike before, and now they get an opportunity to get on a bike and with teachers that are caring and believe in them. So our summer program is really important in our summer months in the district.
You talk, I have a few things that would be expand on.
Yeah.
The first one is, can you talk a little bit about the opportunities that this has opened up for high school kids to get some experience?
Yeah, so we hire camp counselors for the programs. We have licensed teachers, we have paras, and then we also have camp counselors. Two years ago, started with Esser Funds, but now we are continuing it with additional funds. We started a program partnering with the Educational Career Pathways Program, where we look at students who are looking at a career in the education field. We then do a week-long youth development certification with them before the program starts. They are paid for this training, and then they become the camp counselors in the program who are then trained in pedagogy and youth development and like get some really good skills about how to work with youth in group time and circle-up time and strategies that will help them in the classroom be successful. And then they work with our students for the four weeks. And then they work with our students for the four weeks of summer learning academy and we do check ins with them weekly. So it's been super successful, we've seen retention of our summer camp counselors coming back year after year. We've had a few off to college in the educational career pathways. So we'll see after four years if they come back to us as teachers. We have had some before this program even teach, do camp counselors and then come back to us as teachers. Like Janae LaRocque was, or Janae Zenzen was a camp counselor, went to school to be a teacher. And now she's in our district, so it's really like a pathway program for our district.
How many years could they actually be a counselor potentially, I mean, how, how young?
They can start at sixteen a- as a camp counselor and they can work all through colleges camp counselors. Yep, we really love the college ones coming back that have that knowledge and skills. And we found that adding this certification for them gives them an opportunity to put something on their resume. But also to explore education and to see, is it something that they enjoy? Or we've had some do it one year and say, nope, it's not for me. And we've had some that continue to come back. And this year, I think all of them from last year are coming back except for one and because she is a teacher now, so she, if we have room for her.
Do, you know, did that? When you see people kind of leave this program, let's say, do they choose different majors potentially then? Do they get out of education overall, you know?
I'm not sure, but the one that did leave, she chose a different major. She was a high school student and chose to go into a different career.
Yes.
The seventy percent that qualify for, first off, I love all of the data in the statistics, that is amazing.
Thanks.
The seventy percent though, can you talk about how that applies to our general population in our district?
Yeah, that's uh our, generally we've been like forty five to fifty.
So we overindex on kids attending this program on free reduced, but it is a referred program.
It's a referred program, so um so at risk factors could be the R.
Just trying to connect like all that.
Yes.
Which is, it's really significant when you look at achievement gaps and how, no, uh, it's really, Melanie talked about the summer slide. It's not this like slot deficiency that exists, what when you look at, I'm kind of like looking at you doing this. Um, students that qualify for free or reduced lunch have a tendency to have this gap. That it builds over time, so their, 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 their school year growth is similar. But their summer regression uh or their summer like maintenance or even maybe a little. That doesn't happen as often or to as great a degree, so you have this like similar uh slope. Then a drop and then a similar slope and that accumulation of those gaps is what ends up leading to achievement gaps. It's not a, you know, a cognitive deal, obviously, it's really about accumulation of those gaps. Um, back to the statistics comment, the data, Melanie, one of the things that Melanie's done a good job is connecting with our. School year data system, so like this isn't a standalone program that's living in its isolation. Um, it's the data that we're accessing is connected during the summer is connected to the school year data too. I don't know if there's anything else you want to mention about that, even the, the systems we are using are the same.
Yeah, so in the summer, we use the same data system at the climber, um, working closely with M T S S coordinator Jen Chidin. And you know, students are referred based on that data and we're um. When we run interventions in the summer, they're also put into that data system as well. So we can see, track a student from spring, summer to fall and see where that student. Needs are within our educational supports.
The, the last thing, then I'll let you move through your slides here, but do you want to talk just a little bit and maybe it's later? But how extended time or how that funding works? Um, yeah.
Yeah, so this, this program is funded through targeted services. It's based on pupil units in the program, so we get, we can in additional point two pupil units per student. That is in the program year round, so it's a year round program, we have to provide it after school and summer. And um not all students take advantage of it year round, but it's a requirement by the state to offer year round programming. So we're granted point two for students, up to point two additional um funding points for students. This funding has not changed for fifteen years. So legislatively, um, our group is looking to try to, as everyone else in education. Looking how can we expand funding for after school academic programming for students? Um, obviously with inflation, we're not able to afford what we could. We had S R funds for a few years here and we're able to really amplify the program. Bring in a lot of great things that we don't want to see lost. And so now it's seeking competitive grants and things to continue those things that we saw working over the past three years. And um continuing to offer those for our students because we know they deserve the best. Figuring out ways to partner with other organizations so we can still continue it. Or legislatively, if we can advocate for additional dollars in our targeted services fund. And um that's down the road, but that would be our fix to some of it.
Melanie, I just would like to say that I have had one of my children in learning academy and it is a fantastic program. And as a parent, it helps me better understand how I can supplement them after learning academy is over to help. Reduce that summer slide because it is a thing, you know, and so um this is very beneficial to our community and, and I really do enjoy this program. So thank you.
Melanie, how does Big Fork get served by learning?
Yes, thank you. Um, Big Fork has also a learning academy program up in Big Fork, their numbers are included in this. So this is Grand Rapids area schools numbers, but their program is held in Big Fork at their schools. We have two licensed teachers and a para in the summer, they get breakfast and lunch. They also, transportation is provided for both sites. And their numbers are about thirty kids, so we have two teachers, thirty kids. We also partner with four H in Big Fork and four H brings this, so in Grand Rapids, it's a full day program. In Big Fork, since it's harder to find teachers that want to teach full days, we partnered four H, so still make it a full day program. But four H provides the afternoon with hands on learning, enrichment opportunities for kids. So they have similar program to Grand Rapids. Theirs is only the month of June, ours is June and July, but four weeks of programming for both sites. Very similar programming, same, same opportunities and same academic supports are happening in both places. Yeah, I'm glad you. And then our, my final column here is our grants program. Community Ed works a lot of um. Grant systems trying to find grant opportunities for our community, I didn't have to say that accurately. But we currently have um three grants that we have under us physically right now. Um, there's, every year I feel like we have in and out of different grant opportunities and different agencies we're working on. And programming, but our two, I, I shouldn't say we only have three grants. We have lots of grants that support these programs. So Project Read is supported by many different agencies, not just one foundation. Um, Safe Routes to School is supported in different, many different pots of money. And then our tech hub is also supported in many different opportunities. But these are the three programs under our umbrella that have grant funding su- supporting them. Um, Project Read, I guess, I didn't do a slide for that one, so I'll go back to that. Project Read is about partnerships in our community, it's about distributing gently used books back into our community. So we do book drives throughout our district to get kids and families to donate books. And then we circulate them back out at Family Fence, whether it's Children's Fair or um red book shelves around our community. So people can grab and take a book with them. The goal of it is to that every kid has an opportunity to read at their reading level. And then um Safe Routes to School is a program that was funded. We had a Safe Routes to School grant through um a federal grant. And we were not granted that this past year, which we then, we said, um, we don't want to lose this opportunity. Because it has provided many neat things for our community and our schools around safe routes. And just looking at things differently and how we can provide students with opportunities to be safe in our schools. But also opportunities to learn to bike and walk safely to school. So we partnered this, this fiscal year, we are partnering with the Itasca County Public Health Ship Program. They had some additional funding, so they are funding our Safe Routes to School coordinator through their program. And so every year we'll continue to look for that program and how we keep it and sustain it. Because I'm assuming their funds will go away and will, I just applied for another Safe Routes to School grant. That will be granted um coming up in June, so if we get that, then we'll be able to continue another year. So continues to look for funds for this. But some of the cool things that this program has brought in is if you're at east or west, you may have seen a traffic garden. It's painted where the buses come in and it's just looks like our roads, but it's for us to take kids on and learn to. Teaching them proper signs and signals for biking or walking or families just to go out there and do it on their own. There's roundabouts to learn how to bike around a roundabout safely and there's stop signs and so it's just a great place. Didn't cost a lot of money, but it caught, it took time and effort to organize it that now we have in our parking lots now. We also brought in um a program called All Kids Bike. We presented on this at the Minnesota Community Ed Conference and many people were excited about how do I do this for our district? And what it is, if you've seen the trailer sitting out here, it's got twenty four strider bikes in it. We have two trailers, so we have a total of forty eight strider bikes, so these little bikes with no pedals on them. There are pedal kits that come with it, so some of them may have pedals now. But we are going across Itasca County into kindergarten and first grade classrooms and working with kids on basic bike, bike skills. Whether it be balancing or once they get that balancing, adding the pedals on. And so we've seen kids never be on a bike to now they are riding a bike. And Anne Campbell is the coordinator for the program and if you, she's amazing, I'm sure you all know her, she's like, yeah. She is loving this program and she loves getting with the younger kids and getting them biking. So it was just up in Big Fork, that's a picture, I believe in Big Fork, or maybe that's a Nashua Kiwanon one. But it's been over Nashua Kiwanon, it was in Big Fork, Cohasset West, it's going to Greenway next week. So we are spreading these bikes out across Itasca County, so all kids will have an opportunity.
Kindergarten, you said?
Kindergarten and first grade.
First grade and they do it right as part of the school classroom.
Yep.
Interaction like.
The gym teachers are offering it with, with all of their kindergarten and first grade classes this year. This is our first year getting it to all buildings. Last year we just, we had just got the trailers, so I think last year we went to Cohasset and Big Fork last year. This year getting more opportunities, we did it in the summer program as well. And then we also partner with Get Fit Itasca to bring the larger bikes into our gym classes for our middle school age kids. And elementary age kids, so hopefully no kindergarten rapids will ever say, I've never had an opportunity to ride the bike. And the new grant I applied for is all abilities bike. And so if we get this grant, it is strider bikes but adult size. So our students who are at a middle school level that maybe don't have the balance to be on one of our big bikes can do a strider bike. Um, we're working with special ed on that grant, so fingers crossed, that would be a really cool to bring some of those bikes for individuals with. Um, not as good a balance to be on a regular bike. And then we also do our national walk bike to school events. Those happen three times a year where we're encouraging families, kids to get out, bike together. Our P E teachers are also on that day really encouraging kids to go and walk bike. Done some five Ks and pumpkin runs on these national days, just trying to encourage that health and wellness style for kids. Also Anne has worked with the city in both Cohasset and Grand Rapids to secure some infrastructure grants. And one, one more was recently written, but Anne was um instrumental in helping the city with the in- infrastructure. Infrastructure grant for the middle school parking lot. So that one has come from this position and um the new grant they are applying for is sidewalks. That would go from the middle school parking lot over to east. So there'd be like where that drop off, the staff parking lot, sidewalks going from that skating rink there all the way over to east. So fingers crossed for that grant and the city applied for that grant to be able to provide that opportunity.
They recently completed the one in Cohasset sidewalks in the schools, so that was Anne too.
So at the middle school, we've got to rework our, our parking lot coming up, right? Is that through the safe routes that that kind of happened and instigated?
That's right.
So this position has been very instrumental in our district, even though it's um minimal hours. It's the, the position has made an impact on our district in many ways. And it's, it's important that we try and keep it around and as much as we can. She's, I mean, Anne does a great job, but the people, the coordinators before have all played, made things go in place that have helped. With those safe routes and making sure that we can afford to, because we all know we want these things, but it's the money that comes behind it. So it's hard to do.
And we do have kids that bike every day.
Yeah.
Regardless of snow, right, you know, they do bike every day. And I don't know if anybody follows it, but there is a, I think they're out in Maine and they do a bike bus once a month. And it's a gym teacher and it's a hoot and then he goes through the community and they play like music on big speakers. And they have like parents who drum off, but the kids each join the bike thing. It's super cool to watch and it's like Justin Bieber came, like because he went viral. But it was like, it's like this, and they, all the people wear yellow vests and stuff and they're stopping traffic. And the kids are just rolling through and it's super cool to watch because there's hundreds of kids that join that bike bus in town.
That will be the next thing Anne jumps on, she is, she's good.
Yeah, adults and everybody.
Commenting on the bike to school, the day we started late, few hours late, or a couple of weeks ago there. Somebody went by, bike into school at ten o'clock. Commented to me and we were just like, wow.
That's dedication, right?
Fat tire.
They are those.
They are citizens every day that um bike to the middle school um on their fat tire bikes and their head to toe. They've got their big old helmets and big old ski goggles and their gloves on their hands and they're just sitting in the school.
Yes, yeah. Um, the other program right now that is new to our district is the tech hub. And if you guys haven't stopped down there, it's in this building, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, after school until eight PM. And we've had currently fifty eight students who have registered with us and who are attending, not regularly. I would say we have about twenty to twenty two a night. Down there, a lot more of middle school age students, which is great, it's providing an opportunity for them to have something to do after school. And you know, the goal of the program when we first came in, I thought it'd be more high school students. But I think that will come with our career exploration. We are partnering with um career pathways on programming and opportunities for students to do a career internships in the tech hub. So with that, that would, right now we have two students that are called ambassadors. So the two student workers come in a couple nights a week and work with our middle school students. They're not in the tech career pathway program. However, our next goal would be some of the students that are in our um I T career pathway would be coming in. And the tech hub will be able to connect them with internships of businesses they're working with in the tech hub. So really looking at it as how can we help students, for one, explore technology? And career pathways within technology, but also two, then connecting students to industry in our community. That is looking to hire or allow students to explore technology within the course.
How, how does this differentiate from like industrial arts in our high school? Let's say in up in Big Fork, you, you know, you know, from that standpoint of like three printers. I know I've seen them up in Big Fork in the library, was that actually tech hub or was that industrial arts?
So the.
I guess, how are they intertwined and where's the separation, I guess?
Yeah, so the, the programs that are in the schools are directly school programs. What we're trying to do here is allow students that are exploring those things in the schools to come here after hours and explore deeper. And um maybe explore more.
Supplementing it.
Yes, yep. And giving them opportunities to do a little bit more with it too. So like self exploration with like Adobe Photoshop, we have it in our high school. But they have an hour each day to explore and learn, but then they can come here and really self explore and try new things. Or like three D printers. Or like three D printers, trying to design something on your own and then come here and print it. Um, we have a state of the art sound booth where we don't have that anywhere else. So allowing students to come in and explore um maybe singing, but also explore then the creative side of it. Putting it all together into a music or a commercial. Or how does that singing correlate with something that you do in a career with it?
So we're trying to keep the same platforms and the equipment similar. Let's say if it's Adobe Photoshop in, in classroom they're working with, that's what you're working.
Yes, trying to, we partnered with the teachers at the high school, trying to make programming similar, but also different. So they can explore more opportunities probably at the Tech Hub than they could.
Well, and obviously they're not s- supervised for lack of a better term, or it's not somebody right over their shoulder showing.
Yep.
Who say have this, in this atmosphere.
And what the Tech Hub will do is we will offer um programs where students have to register and it's a specific like drone one-on-one. So they'll learn all about the drone, but then when they come to the Tech Hub. At exploration time, they can explore a drone or virtual reality or different things that they may have learned. In a program that was taught for a week long program. And then they can step into it and explore on their own deeper and try to learn exploration ways. Um, another thing that has come out of this is certifications. So right now we are offering um cybersecurity certifications for sixteen plus. And they are taking a twelve week course in this, it's virtual. But they're also getting paid to go through this course through the Tech Hub. They have a grant fund to pay students to go through the course and by the end of it, they'll have a certification. So that was a real cool opportunity for our students. We identified them through um students who are interested in I T at the high school. And in the I T career pathway, those students were identified and were.
So when I saw that three D printer up in, well, I agree in Big Fork, was that part of tech or was that part of the?
It was part of industrial arts.
So do we have a facility up in Big Fork? I, I mean, we've got the, this is our Tech Hub, right?
They're, they're just grants. Yeah, so it's separate organizations. They're run, so Smart North. Has spawned kind of two tech hubs in rural.
Yeah.
They started in the Twin Cities, um but they're, they kind of piloted the first one in Deer River through COVID. And it was super successful and it's not really, like the audience we have now is kids, but it's not really just for kids. It's hoping like if there's an adult that wants to dig in and learn about cybersecurity in order to get a better job, right? I mean, that those things get to be explored. So we're starting kind of with that group that we know, like isn't afraid of technology. But the hope would be that you could build on that.
Our goal is students first. Second is feminine or females. So the, the program as a future is feminine, so we're really targeting females. And so Tuesdays and Thursdays are our adult exploration in the Tech Hub. We don't have it fully up and running yet how we want. Most of it is virtual with the females that have um registered for the program. And then our third audience is our adults and that's gonna be more through Community Ed Programming. We're offering a sound booth course, we're offering a three D printer course, and these are all adult and adults who pay to explore with the Tech Hub. And no, so the goal is to get all three of our audiences in and exploring the technology.
And so from uh adults would pay, so it would just be a community uh. A regular program in.
Community Ed.
Community Ed program.
Yep.
Um, how about for the students? Is it a, a paid or is it an?
It's a free program. So Smart North is our partner with this. And through COVID, we were able to purchase all the equipment in there. Smart North is the one fiscal host of the grant and they are the ones seeking funding through deed. Or um individual grants to continue to allow free programming in the Tech Hub. We also do meals in there and those are through um. The food, food pantry, is that what it's called here in town? Yes, yes, is providing some meals in there. So it's all been free so far for our students. And for the Futures Feminine Program is free also, and some stipends for females looking to go explore a career in technology.
Students, but it's been, been basically through grants and fully subsidized through individual.
Yes, hundred, hundred percent subsidized through grants.
The Chamber worked closely with this, so that's, and part of the Futures Females, just there's very few females in tech. And Sabina, who's kind of the driver of this, comes out of Fortune five hundred tech. And so this is kind of contribution. She's fabulous. If you haven't met her and she comes in, you should meet her. She's amazing.
Yeah.
But we have been able to partner some businesses um who are providing some training along the way to recruit. I mean, they, they wanna give back and it's a shame about the two suits. And it's a way to feel like we, we're dead last. I mean, it's hard to ignore that. We're dead last in computers in Minnesota. That's, it's terrible. It's a way to at least start to supplement what we don't have. And not all kids have hours to take the classes in high school, so it provides a little bit of after school.
This is a transportation stop, but so that's how kids can get here. It's just they hop on the bus. In the middle school and you can stop there.
May Mobile will also be active.
Yeah, we partnered up for Marty as well. So I feel like the Tech Hub is really in exploration stages. We opened in June. This summer, we probably had twenty to thirty kids come in and now this school year, we've had fifty-eight students attending. Um, really looking at growing it into things we've talked about here. But as a real hub in our community for students and adults to explore technology. And see if it's a for opportunity for them. So always open to ideas. If any of you have ideas, share with us. But would love to introduce you guys to Sabina someday. She's really the brains behind it, programming behind it. Um, that's what I have from Community Ed. Any questions you guys have?
M D I's program that really is not tied to this in any way as a tech or.
Quest?
Quest.
Yeah. Oh, so Quest is not tied to the Tech Hub. We did, so other things that we're doing in the Tech Hub is bringing students in during the day. So Quest is a program that has come into the Tech Hub during the day. And those are students that are eighteen to twenty-two in uh our programming. I'm not exactly sure if I'm saying that's right.
Quest, yeah.
Request program that are really looking at building skills to be successful in our community. So we brought them into the Tech of once a month to explore the technology careers. And some of them do not like it, so they also get to explore pickleball and basketball. And not saying they don't like it, they would just much rather be playing pickleball or basketball. So there's opportunities for everyone within that sites. Many of them are in there singing and producing music. And some of them have built their own cribbage, or not cribbage, chess boards with the three D printers. And it's a exploration way where they are also coming back after school hours and participating in programming. And we've brought in middle school, um Gift and Talented Program came in and explored. So just bringing different groups in, we're looking at doing a tech crawl, but doing it in the Tech Hub. Where industry will come into the Tech Hub and talk about what their industry does around technology and careers. Around technology instead of going out into communities. So bringing them to us.
I really like your color code diagram.
I'm a keeper like that.
I love that.
Anything else you guys have?
I appreciate the uh collaboration and cooperation with the neighboring schools as well. Uh, I think that's really key to building a, a stronger community.
Yeah, and I feel in my job. Uh, um, that's been the biggest benefit is having all four districts collaborate to do community education. Cause I don't feel it would be as successful if we were all trying to do our own things and um. Working together is just resourceful and it feels all inclusive, like we all meet. So we're meeting district, I S Y, we're meeting and collaborating and partnering and, and really growing off each other's strengths. You know, what everyone has in their buildings to be successful.
Do you have any sort of participation numbers by district in terms of?
I do, yeah.
I'd love to see that at some point, just to see what percentage um is from Grand Rapids, Greenway, Deer River, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
To see the utilization of the one, connect one, one community ed program, but how does that, or maybe if I missed it?
No, you didn't miss, I didn't break it down by district, but Grand Rapids total is about if you, fourteen thousand. Opportunities. Last year we had twenty thousand five hundred.
Okay, okay.
Total across I S.
Sure.
And Grand Rapids was about fourteen thousand of that. And it based, we really, Community Ed does it by percentage. When we look at the district, we look at total population of each district to um, how it's funded. So each, so Grand Rapids is like sixty-one percent, Greenway is seventeen percent, Nashua is nine percent of our total I S population. And if you break it down by that, we're pretty, participation pretty much looks the same. Grand Rapids is the bigger percentage of participation for um each district. As it's ups and downs years, but pretty much we're pretty equal around like total population. Based on percentage as I S, but I do have exact numbers for each district.
I wanna do coffee and coloring and bowling.
Yeah. Yeah, so this was the.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Melanie.
Alright, thanks guys.
Thanks, standing on the agenda draft.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Every year we start by working with our I S partners and discussing calendar. Uh, we've been sharing a calendar for twenty years. You can see a draft in your packet. Uh, it's not easy because every contract across the uh schools, school districts is different in some way. About we've tried to make it work by focusing on the student days and trying to overline. Um, and you know, over those twenty years, there have been times when there was more shared programming going on with students. Maybe we were running a, running classes that three district had kids in, and we had years where there was less. Um, sometimes it's been synchronous where kids were traveling, like right now we have kids in the morning from Greenway. Come to take a machining, machining or manufacturing class here, physically show up. Um, and so some of, you know, having those things lined up has been really important. Uh, when we originally started lining up our calendars and bell schedules twenty years ago. Um, every district had been doing things a little different. Some had spring breaks, some winter break things. Some districts prioritized being done early, some districts had, you know, lots. So every district kind of had to give up a little bit when we came together. Uh, one of the things that was talked about then was, you know, we're gonna try to get spring breaks in there, cause some districts kind of had that all the time. And I don't, I think we've maybe had a spring break four or five times in twenty years. Um, and so, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, people are always like, I don't wanna be here till June fifteenth, you know? Um, this calendar uh is unique because September, I mean, looking ahead to this twenty-six, twenty-seven. School year or twenty-five, twenty-six, what am I saying here? Twenty-five, twenty-six school year, right? Um, September first is on a Monday. It's like as early as it could be, which means we get lots of school in September. Which means it's more kind of efficient educational calendar, which means we can have a spring break. Um, and be creative and still be out in that first week of June, not even completing that first week. Uh, we are taking our conference comp day, shoving it into that spring break week two. So it's tightening that up. We're gonna take advantage of when Easter is to tighten that up, so we're not losing too many days to that. So anyway, uh, point being the calendar really, um, if you're a person that likes a long Christmas break. And long, and a spr- spring break, this is a really nice calendar. Um, we, we talked about it at the I S administrative table about being in a position where people could make some, have some predictability to. Where, hey, we, when, when September first is a Monday, we're gonna have a spring break that year. So people can kind of know like, we're gonna have this for sure every five or six, five or six years, depending on leap years, almost work in there. Um, at least, so I think that's important because there are people that are waiting a long time for a break. There's not a good time to do spring break, I can tell you. Um, we tried to shoot for in between sport seasons. That's always a challenge. It's tough to hit. Um, some families will take a spring break whenever they want anyway, so it's not like this perfectly that way. Um, but uh, yeah, so this has gone to the uh superintendent's committee at I S. Been approved there, went to the I S board of directors last Tuesday night, was approved there. Um, the, you'll see that conferences, we still have a full conference day on November fourteenth. Uh, the other conference, there'll still be evening conferences around that time too, but I really, you know, put that into the principals and their buildings. Space to say, hey, do what makes this make sense for your, you and your buildings, you and your parents. Uh, in the past, we've had them like all crammed into the same week and there isn't really a. There's not a compelling reason to do it that way. In fact, the person from some parents are like, I can't get to three buildings in one night. Uh, so if they can be spread out a little bit, that would be nice. So we're gonna try that. And Sean Martinson's kind of been organizing the, the, that, uh, so we can get that going. So uh, stay tuned on that. The other, the other thing that we're gonna do that's not reflected on this calendar. For a number of years, we've been running trimesters with our kindergarten and first grade. Um, and that doesn't jive with any of the other eleven grades. Um, and there were reasons why we did that at one point, but because of our data systems and what we're doing now, those reasons don't really. Hold up anymore. And so we're gonna be shifting to all quarters uh next year. Um, and staff are, 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 are fine with that for the most part. It'll be some adjustment, but you know, it, it really gets goofy because like the end of the quarter day isn't the end of the. You know, it's not the end of the section of time day for those kindergarten teachers, so they, it's, it's just monkey. So it'll be good once we get on this encounter. Um, the, as you'd expect, there are some people that are gonna look at this and go, this is the greatest. And there are gonna be some people going, I hate this, you know, um, and so, you know, that's part of, kind of a part of it.
Um, how many student days do you have?
We have a hundred and eight, we have a hundred and seventy-one student days. Yes, a hundred and eighty staffed. Uh, I ask, uh, there's, Northland has a hundred and eighty-three staff days, Deer River is one eighty-one, Greenway is one eighty. So it's kind of all over that way. That one hundred, that a hundred, you know, in the state, if we were to look at staff days. You'd see some districts with staff days like a hundred and ninety. Uh, and there's no. The staff, the student contact is driven by instructional hours now. It used to be that you had to have the same number of student days as you had in some calendar twenty years ago or something. And then a number of years ago, they changed it so that at the high school level, you have to have a thousand and, I can't remember the number for sure. Thousand and twenty or something like that. Um, so it's leveled by kindergarten has to have less, elementary a little bit more. High school has to have the most instructional hours, so it's not driven by days so much.
The, the staff days are contractual, no, correct?
That's right. Yep. So we could, yeah, there's no, the, how many student days? Trying to remember a teacher contract that's in there. Is the number of student contact days in the teacher contract?
I don't remember.
Um.
Just the, just.
Just the one eighty, yeah. So we could do more. Um, yeah, so there's some, some wiggle room in there. On this topic of calendars, uh, the state did, did change their. Their interpretation of law on four day week. Um, so it used to be that they had put a moratorium on that, they lifted that. Some districts are looking into that more. We talked about it uh quite a bit, I'd say, or some. Uh, what I've heard like Melissa that Mount Iron. Right, but you know what, um. They have a hundred and eighty-three square miles and six hundred kids. We have four thousand kids and two thousand square miles, so that density issue at some point matters because it translates into ride time on most. So, anyway, not that that isn't something we'll continue to think about. We'll see some more districts do it this year.
They haven't solved the Friday care for families, working families. They are, I mean, that's one thing they're working on, Community Ed. They haven't solved that yet, that's the biggest issue, I think, it's just.
So this will come to you on February tenth for approval of this calendar.
Now, this is always a question, yeah, sorry. Snow days.
Yeah.
How many of those four hours, I should say, should be available within this calendar to?
Yeah, so, um, it, it used to be that you'd hear districts talk about, we have four snow days built into the calendar, or we have three snow days built into the calendar, or some, some places now will talk about it kind of on the other side, like if we have three cancellations, this day is identified as makeup day. With the current calendar, I'm going off memory here, I believe we have about nineteen extras, uh, high school hours. So like two and a half days, three days maybe, we, we did have to make up time two years ago, I think, and so we kind of did some manipulation around Wednesdays and and that kind of thing towards the lap back half of the year, so we didn't have to have kids come back full day, you know, you could, you, I mean, you can get creative, you can say we're gonna start school five minutes earlier, or check out five minutes later, pick up ten day, ten minutes, you do that twenty times, you made up a lot of time, so there's ways around that. We never really need to worry about about instructional hours at the elementary levels because the, the number is that much smaller than the high school type.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
No.
Um, this next part is a little bit more for, I'd say, for our new members, uh, because it's been an ongoing issue since twenty twenty three, but also just an update for our returning members too. Um, I mentioned in this handout, the in twenty twenty three law was passed. Communication originally went out broadly, like, hey, this law was passed, be aware. And then June, more of a targeted con, uh, communication to a, a list of school districts, including us. You could see kind of what the, in that first bullet there, what it specifically talked about. I'll be honest, and I've shared this before, when I got the email in June that year, I was like, this, you know, this is not intended for us because I don't know what the problem is. As I dug into it, it became clear that it was intentionally said into us on purpose for a reason. And it has to do with, uh, you know, a historical individual and the Sioux tradition. Let's see, as per the law, we submitted an application for an exemption with support of our Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee and Director and, uh, organizations, the eleven tribes and the tribal nation's ed committee had told me December to get back to us. If they didn't say anything, it was a state put. So it was, you know, it was a kind of a, um, yeah, it was an opt outer kind of a situation. And we heard back from five, three of them were denials, they listed them there in that poll. As more information became available, it became clear that the law was applied very, very inconsistently, and I shared some examples here on the sheet. The Thunderbirds is probably the most like clear inconsistency. Uh, and I, in talking in the last week, I've had communications with the GFW Sioux and the Browns Valleys, Valley Sioux. GFW is in the process of changing their name to the Firebirds. And Browns Valley is in the process of changing their name as well. Browns Values, Browns Values, Value really neat district, they're like right on South Dakota border, like they probably have as many South Dakota students as Mississauga's that attend there, and the tribe they have the most kids from is in South Dakota, so. Um, that's an example where you have the exact same mascot, two districts denied, one approved, really no rationale for a difference there. I shared another inconsistency there with Warriors, you know? That was handled differently, and it was not given the targeted email, if you need to do something about this, what is? Ours is, uh, obviously, uh, you're aware, there is another Thunderhawk. I have no idea what's happening there. When this first happened, um, they they really just missed it, they missed the whole process, kind of passed them by. And then now they're in the process of getting them sued and it's kind of like, so I don't know. If, if nothing else, it makes the question like, what happens if you don't do anything and you're identified? Because they, on a video, is, is less, is like twenty five or thirty miles from a tribe that we did get denied from. Um, so I'm sure they did too. And then obviously, what I think is the most like obvious clear violation of the law, uh, that, that mascot was approved.
The War, Warriors one was approved, or it was not?
It was approved, yeah. It was not, it was not denied an exemption, so they were, they originally got the same letter, like you need to change. They submitted their letters to the eleven tribes of TNEC, and they didn't get any denials back.
Did we know what their letter said?
This was the target of that decision.
Right, no.
This Warriors.
And I've, you know, I presented some of these inconsistencies with legislators that were involved in the process and there is a, um, depending on which one you speak to, there's some acknowledgement that this is a mess, and among some, it's kind of like, oh. There are some bills, there's a number of bills right now that are jacketed that, uh, range from repeal the law, which I don't think is very likely to fund all the districts that need to change, because if you start adding up the cost to do this, our just uniform cost is a quarter of a million dollars. And if you, what, what also is unique about our school district is our mascot isn't just the mascot for a school, it's the mascot for all the schools. And if you start, if you go around and look for it, it is, I don't know. So it's gym floors, it's, you know, statues, it's all kinds of stuff. One thing that I did find when I was down there, uh, talking to a particular legislator, this legis, particular legislator was not aware that school districts buy uniforms. And in the course of that conversation, it became clear why that in the cities, I shouldn't, I shouldn't speak so broadly. In many city schools, boosters are funding, paying the cost of the uniform so that your rotation can be more frequent. Right, so like we have a, a uniform rotation, rotation might be eight or ten years. Uh, booster clubs jump in there more frequently and say, new unis every three years. So the booster clubs have picked up the cost of uniforms from school districts. This legislator thought that was the normal kind of way things go. Obviously not here, some, sometimes here, but not, uh, not here. So anyway, reason I am bringing it to you today is, uh, to sort of bring everybody up to speed on where it's at. Uh, and part of that is, uh, this, in the twenty twenty four session, they extended the timeline out. It had been that we needed a new, we would need a new mascot by this upcoming September. They pushed it out to the, to September of twenty twenty six. And during that same twenty twenty four session, they also required that we submit a report talks about what we're doing, as I listed at the bottom there on my update, um, what we have to include. And I guess the reason to bring it to you tonight is to get a sense from this board, how you want me to handle this report in light of our particular, you know, our, our past position, which has been, we're gonna wait until we see what the legislature does to see if there are changes to the process. Because there's a, there's a line of thinking there that, um, you know, like I said, the probability of them repealing the laws, the probability of them throwing all kinds of money at it is not that great either, given the legislation. But that also might create an opportunity, you know, if you're not gonna fund it, then let's talk about the process. So, um, I guess looking for some direction, would you like, you know, me to continue as I fill out this report to, you know, maintain our, kind of maintain our position, which has been, we're gonna wait and see if anything changes before we move forward with, you know, an expensive process.
I'd like to, uh, kind of chime in here, I sent a note to Matt about this. I feel pretty strongly about fighting this. I don't think that the law was applied correctly, I think the law was written pretty poorly. Um, and like I said with an email to Matt, that what it says is that a school may not have or adopt a name, symbol, or image that depicts or refers to an American Indian tribe individual customer tradition. And, um, based on that very vague language, I would argue that we don't do any of those things with our logo. And Matt shared, uh, a little bit of history about Chief Thunderhawk, which is incredible story. Warrior was sitting bull, I think it was incredible history, um, but that's beside the point here. I think the point here is that our logo is not Native American in design, at least from my understanding. Um, I think the story of how it came to be should be part of the conversation that we have. Um, and I think our community is, um, felt pretty strongly to share these things with me at least, um, that why of all things going on, that we're spending our time and entering resources. So that's my.
And, and I, I just think that this community made the choice to make a change years ago to avoid this, and we're right in it. Which is, what assurance do we have that the next decision we make on that doesn't put us three, five, ten years down the road in the same position again? So I, I feel we need to push back and stay as hard as we can on this and become aware, we've already done this as a district once.
Hey, I, I really have a hard time spending money to change the logo when we're cutting teachers. That, that's a really difficult step for me.
I don't know how you can honestly look the community or teachers in the area and say, we've chosen to not fight this or, you know?
This is our priority to spend money on, not you, absolutely, yeah. Yes.
And, and I guess I would add, if there's anything that I can do as a board member, if you give me a list of, do I need to email or what? I'll send it out.
I don't think it's email, so I've been down, right, for a week. And every time I get a chance, I talk about this, and I talk about the weather board thing. And one thing that I've heard consistently is you need to show up and tell your story, like that's the difference, is to show up in committee when it shows up on an agenda. And I've been watching, right, so I, I now watch the education committee meetings, which are, today was interesting, but they're not always super exciting, but if it shows up on the agenda, having people down there to actually say like, how this is impacting us today and what we look like, and to tell that story is gonna be the difference. Because otherwise, they just hear the voices of this is about justice, this is about equity, and it is. But we've already been, like, we've already tried to do the best we could with information we had. And I, I'm, I'm, I think we should push back, I just think the the fact that that language says, well, how is it not an eagle that didn't get in? Or how did a bear clan, you know, because bears are there, how did they not get taken? Like, what is it that actually were the criteria? Because they, they were established somewhere.
Yep.
Um, but they weren't public or transparent.
So to the, I think to that point, uh, this might be a good opportunity, so Senator Farnsworth has been very like communicative about this, this is really bothersome to him. And he said, uh, told me last week that, um, at that time, you know, they developed a power sharing agreement in the Senate. I hope that'll, assuming that'll continue, we'll see, uh, so yeah. So I think that might be why he was given assurances about a hearing, but he feels like there, it's likely that we could get a hearing, or there will be a hearing on a bill related to this, and that that would be an opportunity for us, uh, to be there and to come down. And, and I feel the same way as Melissa. Last Wednesday, um, Senator Farnsworth asked me to come down and you can do it via Zoom now, um, which is great. But, uh, it's clear, it was clear to me again when I was in that room looking through the eyeballs, that that does matter. And so, um, if, uh, if there's interest, um, if that hearing comes to fruition, I'll let you know, and, uh, if one or more of you'd like to come down with me, uh, to do that, uh, we can work on testimony together and, um, and speak to that. I think his bill will, will be about funding, and I think that's, that's like this component of it, but really I think the larger issue is what's the, what's, what's fair and clear and consistent and appropriate about what's happened? So.
I think you have clear direction from the board on this.
That sounds like it, that's what I needed to know. Yep. I'll, I'll be in touch then as that, uh.
The good news is, is you'll need Farnsworth.
Yep.
You're gonna need, we're gonna need.
All right, uh, at this point, looking for a motion on the second, uh, to go on the closed session according to Minnesota statute fifteen D point zero three, labor negotiation strategies. So I have a motion, someone by Dave, second by Ash. Need a rule? Any discussion before we do that? Julie, can we have a roll call?
David Martin?
Yes.
David Cowan?
Yes.
Actually, yes.
Yes.
So everybody's out, you need a.